Welcome to the July 3, 2012 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver. Mayor Quintero.
Here. The flag, uh, pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Friedman.
Thank you, I invite you to join me in renewing our pledge to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public for which it stands, lawful and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Tomorrow marks the 236th birthday of our United States of America, the living and breathing experiment of democratic governance unlike any that had come before it in the history of civilization. Let us pray and say thanks for all our blessings as Americans and for those who have laid the foundation for our prosperity and success. John Adams, founding father and second president, and arguably the intellectual trust of our nation's birth, had this to say about government. Government is instituted for the common good, for the protection, safety, prosperity, and happiness of the people in not-for-profit, honor, or private interest of any one man, family, or class of men. Therefore, the people alone have an incontestable, unalienable, and indefeasable right to institute government and to reform, alter, or totally change the same when their protection, safety, prosperity, and happiness require it. These words, a stark departure from the divine right to rule of noble families of Europe, are the essence of what we celebrate tomorrow. More than any flag, statue, building, of brick and mortar, what we celebrate tomorrow is ideas embodied in these words spoken by John Adams. Let us celebrate them and live up to them in all our deeds and actions. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the July 3, 2012, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, June 28, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Uh, next, please.
Next is the agenda preview for the meetings of July 10, 2012, under presentation and appointments.
Ms. Beer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for July 10, we have no business agenda items for the Glendale Housing Authority. We also don't have any business agenda items for the Glendale Successor Agency. We do have a special meeting of the City Council to commence at 3:00 PM. This is a public hearing, Director of Community Development. This is regarding a request for a 37 space parking exception for Dynamic Deal Dance Studio to be located at 6318 San Fernando Road. That evening, 6:00 PM, for the City Council meeting, we have one consent item, interim general manager of Glendale Water and Power requests from property owners at 1975 Verdigo Boulevard in the city of La Canada Irrigation District for Glendale Water and Power to provide to them water and fire line services. Adoption of ordinances, we have an ordinance amending Chapter 5.84 of the GMC relating to taxicabs and other vehicles for hire. Under action items, we have one item, Director of Public Works. This is continued from June 19, 2012, Honolulu Avenue Road Diet Test Case Progress Report and the Michigan State University Road Diet Research Report. And we have two items under hearings, Director of Community Development. This is the Glendale Register of Historic Resources nomination for the property located at 1646 Golf Club Drive. And Director of Community Development, this is a proposed ordinance to establish Ross Moyn Historic District Overlay Zone. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments? Mr. Weaver.
Speak into your microphone and hold. Okay, now, something was wrong. Talking about Diana Walker, realtors lived in Glen Oaks Canyon for many decades. Known her over those years. Uh, the reason I bring her up is, we live in a canyon of over 750 homes. Every Fourth of July, she puts a flag on every single household in that canyon. And I don't know that that's done anywhere else. I just wanted to thank her and publicly recognize the fact that she does this every year for everybody in the canyon. If you drive up there, you'll see all the flags. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Friedman.
Just a very brief recap, that this weekend I attended the opening of a wonderful art exhibit in Adams Square. And I'm not going to tell you much about it because the artist himself is here to talk about it, but it's a participatory art exhibit where he invited many members of the community to participate. And, um, he had his opening on Sunday, and a lot of members of the community were there. And it was a beautiful day in the park, and the gas station which holds the installation looked amazing. And it's a wonderful venue to use as an exhibition space. And I wanted to just publicly thank the artist, Michael Sheehan, for all of his work because he went through quite a lot of work and jumped through a lot of hoops to be able to allow the city to allow him to use the gas station for this public art display. And he's going to come up in a few minutes, I know, and tell the community about it so that everyone can go out and see it. But I just wanted to mention that event and to thank him publicly and all of the people who attended. And just lastly, while I have the opportunity, I want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. And just to remind people that when you're having your barbecue and you're having your celebration and you're swimming and all of that, that you remember the reason behind the holiday and how important it is to all of us in our lives and to our nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And to our helicopter pilots who defend our country on all fronts. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a very exciting week. On Thursday, at the MTA Board, the Board by a 10 to 3 vote, voted to present to the voters for their consideration an extension of the Measure R, a sales tax measure that will go to the voters, hopefully, if the Board of Supervisors approve it. Essentially, that means that many of the transit projects will be accelerated to be completed within our lifetimes. Much of the local return that the city and other cities count on to fund their transit projects will also be accelerated. And that includes things like bike lanes and road resurfacing. And, uh, the good news is that with a new transportation bill passed by, uh, the Congress on Friday, we can use that money as leverage to get, uh, literally hundreds of millions of dollars in additional funding for this region. On Friday, I gave you a little preview previously last week, we had the grand opening of the Orange Line Extension. This is a line that goes from, uh, it's a north-south line from the MetroLink Transit Station in Chatsworth and connects to the East-West Gold Line at De Soto and Canoga. This is really the wave of the future for transportation projects in an urban environment because it does not require extensive drilling, filling, obtaining right-of-ways, tunneling, extensive environmental reports. This is really a success story. It was done very quickly, in a matter of about three years. It was completed over a year and a half ahead of schedule, $60 million under budget, really a true success story. It is four miles north-south. It contains a dedicated bike lane that's striped and lighted and landscaped throughout the entire length, and it does connect to the East-West Orange Line. I was fortunate enough to be able to cut the ribbon for that event.
Next.
With Mayor Vierigosa and Supervisor Jurevzowski, who really was the brainchild of this after observing the transit system in Brazil. And he brought that idea. So travel isn't bad. Those who knock travel by elected officials, you really need to realize it. This was a Brazilian trip. He didn't go there with the intention of bringing back transportation ideas, but he came back with it and sold it to the Metro Board, and we went along with it. And it is really changing the, uh, the face of the Los Angeles County in terms of transit. He is now in full support, as well as Mayor Vierigosa, for an extension of the Orange Line, which will go from the current terminus, continuing east, hitting Bob Hope Airport, the city of Burbank downtown, Glendale, connecting then with the Gold Line in Pasadena. They're all very much in favor of that. The MTA Board is studying ways to make that happen. Jono and his staff for years actually have been, uh, looking at possible routes. So this is something that can happen in a matter of a few short years, not a 10-year type of program that a light rail or a subway would entail. So that is very good news, and it was very exciting to be just a small part of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, one more thing. I did, at the MTA Boards, I saw you and Councilmember Manukian, who do sit on the Burbank-Bob Hope Airport Board. I did have a motion passed where MTA would find funds to help, uh, build your intermodal transit center at Bob Hope Airport. So the whole idea is make as many connections as possible between MetroLink, Amtrak, MTA, Light Rail, even our highways to a lesser extent, bikes, et cetera. So, um, thank you for bringing that up to the Board during the commission process and the committee process, and we'll see what we can do to make it a reality.
Now, we're very excited. At the airport, there's one train station, as you know. That line goes to, uh, actually goes as far as San Luis Obispo on the southern line to Ventura, et cetera, Santa Barbara. But now the plans are to have another station on the northern line, goes to Santa Clarita, Palmdale, and, but this concept of the Orange Line, East-West, I think that's, that actually started before our city engineer had gray hair, and that's how long we've been talking about it. But it's the only route that makes sense, if you think about it. Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena, I mean, how are you going to do a rail line through the mountains? You've got the freeway, Colorado Boulevard, the, uh, the bus line would be the best way to go. And the funding's starting to come together, including everything the airport has done, all three commissioners here and others on the boards.
I'm sorry, I didn't mention Mr. Weaver. I was blocked by the...
Oh, it's okay. I wasn't there.
Mr. Manukian's head. But anyway, no, I think that's a great project, and I'm particularly interested in that Orange Line concept. Then you forgot the Economic Alliance that we attended, and very well attended, and those are the cities of Glendale, Burbank, um, San Fernando, and of course, all of the different sections in Los Angeles. Any comments from the staff?
Okay, next, please.
Mr. Mayor, actually, if I could, uh...
Sure.
...make a quick comment on behalf of the libraries. There is a event coming up, uh, July 25, Wednesday, at 7:00 PM. It is a lecture and book signing with Dr. Arda Arsenyan Akmekci, and the book is titled "Towards Golgotha." It's a fascinating story of a survivor of the Armenian genocide. It'll take place at the Central Library. And just by way of background, Dr. Arda Arsenyan Akmekci holds a Master of Arts in Ancient History and Archaeology along with a doctorate from University of Paris. She's Dean of Arts and Sciences at High Gazian University in Beirut, and has received the Medal of Lebanese First Lady for Distinguished Female Academist, as well as Medal from the Ministry of Interior for a Pioneer Role in Supervising Elections in Lebanon. These are the memoirs of her grandfather, who survived the Armenian genocide, and, uh, he also happens to be my great-grandfather. So, um, he was a pharmacist in Constantinople, and actually in a region called Ovajic, and these memoirs were written in 1919, right after the genocide. So it's, uh, the lecture will be in English, and it's on July 25.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kozakian. Any other comments? Okay, next, please.
Next is consent items, following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion.
Yeah? Oh, go ahead.
Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests for a motion as proposed.
I have cards for 5B, so we'll have to pull 5B.
I'll move 5A.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Uh, yes. So would you read the rest of the consent items, but...
5B is Police Chief and Director of Information Services regarding upgrade of the Police CAD RMS Systems. B1 is motion authorizing amendment to the agreement with Tiburon Inc. for additional software license for a one-time amount of $129,380. 2 is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing execution of an agreement with Coben Technologies Inc. for the acquisition of mobile data terminals for a one-time amount of $416,981 and a three-year total maintenance cost of $27,000. 3 is motion authorizing acquisition of computer hardware from Dell Inc. for a one-time amount of $718,445. 4 is a motion authorizing Airwave Inc. to perform the installation of MDCs for a one-time amount not to exceed $118,944. And 5 is authorizing execution of an agreement with Impex Technologies Inc. to provide computer storage area network SAN hardware for a one-time amount not to exceed $45,000. 6 is a motion authorizing acquisition of a UPS system from Guardian Power Projection Inc. for a one-time amount not to exceed $49,000. And 7 is a resolution appropriating $1,578,910 to provide funds for the Police CAD RMS Systems upgrade.
I have a motion.
Motion before the public speakers.
Did you pull 5?
That was 5B. That was all of 5B.
Oh, okay. Um, yes, I have two speakers, Chinook Ramirez, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Ms. Ramirez, just for your information, you have two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here we have technology at its best, with all the sophisticated, intricate software apparatuses, and yet there is no mention in each of the motions of how you will amalgamate this powerful informative software to deter and combat this wicked Latino and diabolical criminal empire formed by the criminal illegal aliens and gangbangers, including those in uniform. For this infestation is growing every day at an alarming rate. Furthermore, Chief, how will you implement and delegate this fascinating technology to alleviate the fears of health, welfare, and public safety to its American people, military veterans, all pilots, and their respective families, while there is still a time and the window of opportunity to hone in and deter them? So Chief and City, can you deliver? Here's one more final point to hinge the total components to your department. What about the public safety, health, and welfare of all our law enforcement chopper pilots? Are their helicopters, whether Aerostar or Igor Sikorsky helicopters, too old or outdated? We must preserve and save our brilliant, zestful, and zany chopper pilots, for if they are safe up in the skies, we will be safe on the ground, too. It is a symbiotic relationship in anything you design or implement, my friends. Moreover, how will you transfer this software, 21st century technology, to further facilitate our chopper pilots in the sky? Do we need to procure more fleet helicopters? Or how about a new city launching and landing pad for our pilots that will be, um, with the software that you are speaking of? Do we need, do we need far more city-county pilots to stave off a possible civil unrest or riots? And how about the repeat of Colorado fires in Glendale? I believe you need more pilots, keep up, to keep up with the criminal empire. Therefore, hire military veterans and pilots and/or furloughed airline pilots and/or my beloved Gillespie Airfield dare-daryl pilots, extraordinaire, they're flying above. And thank you again.
Thank you.
Very much. Happy Fourth of July.
Herbert Milano.
Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I'd like to address item number 7 on 5B, the resolution appropriating $1.5 million to the CAD RMS System. The, um, the summary of the appropriations on the budget, page Jade 2, does not show any amount being budgeted for the, uh, 2012-2013 period. There is an amount that shows in the column for, uh, 2010-2011 for $1,545,000. But I just thought I'd point out to you that according to your budget summary of appropriations, there's a zero amount there showing. So, this is the beginning of the new year. I was just wondering how this item does not appear to follow your budget appropriation. Second item I wanted to mention is that it is not very often, at least not that I can recollect, when we have an evaluation of the Information Services Department's budget. The budget 10 years ago was 3.7 million. The budget today is 16 and a half million. I know that the city has about 130 different programs, perhaps more now, the last time I checked, a couple of years ago. But I think that it behooves the city to do a session where you do an evaluation of all of the information technology, because I figure at the end of the day, what you want is increased productivity of the staff that you have, and obviously, increased information so you can make better decisions. I think it behooves us to look at those, these trends and find out where that money is going. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion. Will the honor, second?
Second.
A roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Okay, next.
Next is Oral Communications. This is a three-minute event announcement portion. We will resume the five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city bills.
I have one card, Michael Sheehan.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Michael Sheehan. I live in Adams Hill, the eclectic part of southern Glendale. Thanks to Ms. Freeman and to Mr. Ochoa for their participation in what came to be known as the July 4 Project for the Gas Station and Adams Square Mini Park, Words of American Patriots. And I was heartened to hear in our invocation the words of John Adams quoted, and he's quoted also in the 60 Words from 60 Artists that are included in the gas station installation. This is how some of the words looked on my deck before we installed them, or I installed them, in the gas station in the Adams Square Mini Park. So this is to invite you all, which I would have done last week had I understood the procedure of how to invite you, to come down to Adams Square and to maybe bring a sandwich or a moment of quiet time to sit and enjoy the art of these 60 people who all volunteered to jump through hoops with me to get the art into the gas station. Four years ago, you may recall that I filled the gas station up with balloons as a first art exhibit, which was severely criticized by local merchants and enjoyed by everybody else. And so this is an invitation, as long as the lights are on in the mini park, you will not be hassled by the police. If the lights are off, then you will. But we hope that you'll come down to South Glendale, to Adams Hill, and enjoy these words, which will be up until the 28th of August. And for all of the hoops that I was enjoying leaping through, the cooperation of Ms. Friedman especially, and Jess Duran and Ripsamay Marashian at the Community Services and Parks Department, and subsequently, the wonderfulness of Cindy Cleary in the Library Department, we had a great turnout on Sunday. And so for everybody who's watching, you're invited. It's free. And if you have comments, you can write to me at directorTV401@yahoo.com. And I'm done.
Well, I want to thank you for doing a really great job. I love the balloons, and I think this is even better. And, uh, I just hope you'll expand your ideas to the rest of Glendale. Don't just keep them down at the, uh, at the little mini park, but you're a unique artist and bring a lot of fun, and in this case, a lot of meaning to, uh, to what you do, so...
Thank you.
Let's see what you come up with.
Well, no, no, not me. This is an invitation to anybody that hears my voice.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Hopefully, present to whomever the powers that be might be, to come up with ideas, to do more installation-type work in the, it's a 12-by-12-by-12 space. It's not very big, but it's got windows on all four sides, and it's a terrific opportunity.
And why don't you give us the address, so the public...
The address is 1020 East Palmer, the corner of Adams and Palmer in scenic south Glendale. 91205...
In Adams Square.
In Adams Square, Mini Park, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Clerk.
Item 7, Adoption of Ordinances. 7A is an ordinance granting a franchise to Southern California Edison. This was offered on June 26, 2012 by Councilmember Weaver.
Move 7A.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian. Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
Under Action Items, 8A is Director of Public Works regarding amendments to Chapter 5.84 of the GMC 1995 relating to taxicabs and other vehicles for hire. 8A1 is an ordinance for introduction. Yes.
Mr. Ochoa.
We have for you a brief presentation regarding taxicabs, but in the, the way it's titled in the Munich Code, and other vehicles for hire, and it's the other vehicles for hire that are the subject of this particular proposed amendment, having to do primarily with non-emergency medical transport vehicles and how the city regulates those. So with that, Mr. Zurn, if you want to provide us with a brief staff report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, let me ask Mr. Bagdani and our Traffic and Transportation Administrator to come up, and I think Mr. Ochoa touched on it, just the emphasis is that this is one small segment of, of the vehicles that are included in this overall regulation, ordinance regulation. And it's just a, a proposal that we're making to you, a recommendation we're making to you to better manage that particular process. And it does not include the taxicabs, but Mr. Bagdani will focus on that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, um, city of Glendale, we regulate taxicabs and non-emergency vehicles. The non-emergency vehicles are transportation that is provided by individual companies. They transport people that have, let's say, are on wheelchair, they have to go to medical offices, hospitals, for types of needs such as dialysis and so on, that they need special transportation. And so companies who have an accessible van, they apply to the city, they go through the process, we do a background check on them, fingerprinting, we look at their qualification, their training program, if they have dispatch where they storeage their vans, and then we prepare a report, it goes to the Transportation Parking Commission. We set a hearing date, and the hearing, we invite all the existing operators, gets noticed publicly, commission receives public input, staff comments and recommendation, and they approve that. Currently, we have 28 companies that are, you know, 27 companies that are in operation with a variety of number of vehicles, you know, two to four vehicles. We have 11 new applicants that are applying, and every year, an existing applicant can come to the city during the month of July. They can add more vehicles if they're doing well with their business, they want to expand, we consider that as well. The process is taking longer every time because we're looking at every single application, doing reference checks, and because all of them, they can't come at the same time sometimes, it takes a longer period to pack, package them together, schedule them for the Transportation Parking Commission for their review. And 99% of the time when we've done the evaluation, we go to the commission, the commission has approved them. We've never denied an applicant. The only time we deny the number of permits that they want to apply for. So let's say they're a brand-new applicant coming to the city, they want to have to operate five vehicles, we usually recommend not more than two. We check where they store their vehicle, make sure that they are not storing it on public streets, and then commission has approved them. We're streamlining the entire process, recommending that the staff, Public Works, and City Clerk receives all the applications. We permit these applicants approval through administrative process. It will make it easier, it will process it faster. We will not reduce any of the requirements that we've had from the past. The staff report essentially has indicated through the first bullets, the change, specific changes that we're planning to do, and we've done some cleanup of the ordinance as it relates to non-emergency taxi, because they were all merged together, so they've been separated. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to answer any more questions, and staff is recommending the approval of the changes.
Mr. Weaver.
Does the city clerk have the resources to take on this additional work?
Actually, it's the...
Actually?
It's the opposite. We would actually be transferring a lot of these duties to be administratively done through traffic and transportation, and eventually, these would be done administratively through them.
All the background checking and everything, it's not going to be in the city clerk's office?
It is in the city clerk's, but we're...
It is currently, but it won't be for long.
So there's no more work?
No.
Then you, oh, okay. It's understood in the report. So it goes to Administrative Services and State?
Traffic and Transportation.
Want a motion?
Yes.
Move 8A1.
It's an introduction. Thank you.
Oh, I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, please.
He is Director of Human Resources regarding memorandum of understanding between the city and Glendale... and Glendale City Employees Association, GCA. B1 is Resolution Approving and Adopting the MOU Commencing July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013.
This matter would have come before you, Mr. Mayor and council, last week with the budget. However, a number of the GCA employees, especially the field employees, don't have access, or at least regular access, to email. They were not able at that time to, to validate the vote of their association. They have done so now overwhelmingly, and so what we are bringing you is, like the other MOUs, a continuation of those terms and conditions of employment. If you have any specific questions about what is contained in the MOU, Mr. Doyle can answer those for you.
Any questions for Mr. Doyle?
We've been...
Mr. Manukian.
Well, I just think that it's important for the community to know what is it that we're approving here, and if you could give a brief synopsis of what this is, I think it would be appreciated by the community, whether there's any raises, any changes, what is, what is this memorandum, what is this MOU?
Certainly. And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a resolution adopting a one-year memorandum of understanding between the city and the GCA. The GCA is the largest of our city's five bargaining units, encompassing approximately 750 employees. These negotiations took place over the course of this spring, and this is what we would call essentially a, a status quo MOU, where the primary terms and conditions of the MOU are going to be kept intact for an additional year. And essentially, what that means is there'll be no salary increases, and this is the fourth consecutive year that this bargaining group has not taken any salary increase.
They did take a salary decrease two years ago. That was imposed on...
In 2010, they took a decrease, and also, over the past few years, there've been elevation of their, their contributions to...
Contributions to the pensions.
To CalPERS, so...
Including, including the sharing of the cost of the health benefits?
Yes, sir, yes.
Which is 100% of the increase, what percentage of the increase is it?
In this year's MOU, it's, it's, we're back to 50/50, where the, again, and the status quo, in that mode, what we're seeking to do is offer no increases, yet seeking no further concessions. So as far as the medical, the employees are picking up 50% of the increase, the city's picking up 50% of the increase. With that, we actually had a pretty decent year as far as our medical renewals. They all came in about 2% to 4% increase, which is quite good considering the medical inflation over the past few years.
And there are no hidden benefits or anything of that sort?
No, sir.
Were sneaking in there?
No hidden benefits, it's all in black and white.
I just want to be straightforward with the community in what our, what this ordinance entails, or what this action item entails.
Just, certainly, this is a resolution for approval, and as Mr. Ochoa said, this was adopted overwhelmingly by the membership with 91% of the vote, and we just got word of that today, so we're hoping the council similarly adopts this resolution.
91%.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I have two speakers, Mike Mohill, followed by Herbert Mulano.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members in the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. The public is told that negotiation with the Glendale City Employees Association and the other city unions must be held behind closed doors and not open to the public in order to ensure best negotiations. But I would like to ask, oh, excuse me, this is not for this.
That's not, okay.
Yeah, this is not...
Okay.
May I start over again?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, appreciate that. It surprises everybody else. Okay. I'll start from the beginning. Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members in the viewing audience. The public is told that negotiation with the Glendale City Employee Association and the other city unions must be held behind closed doors and not open to the public in order to ensure the best negotiations. But I would like to ask this council to tell the public just three things that the unions have asked for that you have not agreed upon. When this, we have city employees retiring with 90%, 75%, 60% of their last years of spiked earnings, something is wrong with the present system of employment. How do you explain to the public, the people who are paying the bills, that when they retire with their social security check, they will never come close to city workers' pension and medical benefits? Nevertheless, the issue before this council should not be about the status quo wages and pensions of the GCEA employees and the other unions who have contributed, who have contributed directly or indirectly to city council members' political campaigns. The issue should be how we are going to fund millions of dollars of unsustainable and unfunded pension obligations, pension obligation, and when are we going to eliminate collective bargaining and the seniority system, and replace it with hiring at will and with defined benefits and contributions, like a 401K plan and social security for all employees. Council should look at the cities of San Diego and San Jose for direction in this area. At the present rate, without change, we will probably be joining the city of Stockton, California, in bankruptcy court. When that happens, city employees' pension and medical benefit will become null and void. And then everyone loses. Everyone loses, including the city employees. Thank you, my name is Mike Mohill.
Herbert Mulano.
Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council and staff, my name is Herbert Mulano. I was wondering if there's a possibility for the public to obtain the, the total amount of overall compensation that is covered under this agreement for the following year. This is one of the questions that I had pending to ask last week. Unfortunately, I was denied the usual inappropriate amount of time to discuss the other three MOUs that were presented. I believe that it would behoove the city to provide the public with information that allows us to do a comparative analysis of the police MOU, the fire department MOU, the management, the GMA MOU, and compare it to the CGE MOU, line by line with regard to salaries, overtime, pension costs, medical costs, and so forth, and then all the other miscellaneous benefits. I did a cursory check of the employees earning over $100,000, added the total, and it came out to more than 50% of the rest of the total, rest of the employees of the city of Glendale. I believe that when you move to approve these MOUs without a full transparency of what has taken place, what the full cost burden is, that it is overall a disservice to the public, to the residents and stakeholders of the city. Full transparency, I think, is, should be part and parcel of a, of an open and equitable government that aims to ask for and seek participation from the general public. From year to year, the cost of total benefits and compensation increased from last year by $3 million. So it's my estimate that a lot of these additional increases in pay and benefits lie somewhere between these various different organizations. I think it will be a good idea to get an evaluation of who is getting the increases year to year. We have an additional $3 million in additional compensation. Where is it going? Is it fire? Is it police? Is it the GMA? And what are the components of those increases? I believe that a comparison of all of these three, of top or four city employer organization costs should be presented to the public in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Friedman.
Well, Mr. Mohill asks, what haven't we given the unions? I thought he was here last week, when we had a group of very upset employees who were upset because we weren't coming to terms with their union. Maybe he wasn't here, I believe it was a year ago, when we had about 200 upset employees, of this very group actually, who were begging us not to impose pay cuts on them, which none of us wanted to do, but which we did do, because we felt that we needed to do that for the health of the city. So while I agree that we're having, that there are problems with the city being able to afford pensions that they have promised to their employees for the past 10, 15 years, to imply that we've done nothing as a council over the past several years is very, very, I think, disingenuous. Secondly, he, this is just a small point, but it's something that's been bothering me, as Mr. Mohill's been speaking month after month, which is he keeps making an argument that says something like, you know, the rest of us, all we get is social security, and they're getting something better, and that's not right. I would just recommend to Mr. Mohill that he looks into social security and why it was created, because it was never meant to be the thing that everyone in the United States retired on. It was never meant to be the pensions or the savings of this nation. It was meant to be something that kept people out of abject poverty. And I think to imply that everybody should be retiring on social security, as he said, city employees should just get social security, I believe he said that about two months ago, I think really does workers of our whole country a disservice. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes. Move 8B1.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
C is Director of Community Development Regarding Enforcement and Outreach Strategy for the Prohibition of the Retail Sales of Dogs and Cats. C1 is Motion Accepting and Adopting Enforcement and Outreach Strategy.
We'll provide you with the detail. This really revolves around a couple of city council priorities pertaining to sustainability and public safety and animal controls.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa, Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council. In August 2011, City Council adopted amendments to Chapter 6 of our municipal code prohibiting the sale of dogs and cats in our local pet stores. This was done in response to a community effort to identify and respond to the problems that were associated with the commercial breeding of animals for the retail pet trade. It's important to note right now, and I want it on the record, that the council's action was not a repudiation of reputable animal breeders, but rather an effort to address those puppy mill or kitten factory-type breeders. The original staff report and the analysis goes into great detail on the justification for the council's action to adopt the regulation, and I'm not going to cover that tonight. At the time the ordinance was adopted, City Council set a grace period for the implementation, allowing for notification of those stores that were identified as selling dogs and cats to transition to a business model that does not rely on revenue from this particular component of that type of business. Staff was asked to develop an enforcement strategy that would kick in at the close of this so-called grace period. City Council at the same time asked staff to develop an educational campaign that would showcase the city's commitment to animal welfare by prohibiting the sales of animals at pet stores, in particular, dogs and cats. Tonight's report summarizes that enforcement strategy and the outreach strategy that goes with it. Initially, staff surveyed the retail stores involved in the pet trade in our town and identified that we have 18 businesses that are involved in pet-related activities in some way or another. Of these, there were only three that were identified as having dogs and cats for sale. During the survey, staff spoke with the three operators that actually had dogs and cats and advised them of the pending regulations. One store owner indicated to our staff that he was getting out of the sales of dogs and cats altogether. Another indicated that he has animals exclusively that have come from animal control facilities or rescue agencies in compliance of what the council intended to do with the new ordinance. And the third was a standard pet store that obtains animals from the sources that were identified as problematic in the original staff report. The first part of the strategy for outreach is a notification to all pet-related establishments. Obviously, the informal part has happened during the survey that was conducted in January. Staff has prepared a notification letter that will go out to all of these stores, and it's included as part of your packet. If the strategy is accepted tonight, we'll go ahead and mail that out. This letter summarizes the new requirements and describes what we're calling the PA Program. PA is taken from the City Council's discussion, and it stands for Protecting Animal Welfare. Those three words came out frequently as the council discussed this nearly a year ago. The PA Program enlists the pet store owner's support for animal welfare in Glendale by committing to both the provisions of the ordinance and the ordinance's intent, which is to increase the number of adoptions of abandoned dogs and cats, and to reduce the number of animals that are bred for commercial sales. Owners that commit to protecting animal welfare will receive a certificate that will be posted in their window, demonstrating their commitment to Glendale's compassionate treatment of dogs and cats. A second part of the outreach strategy focuses on the greater community and should dovetail with national and regional efforts that encourage animal adoption through the limiting of access to specially-bred animals for sale. The strategy will be, will feature flyers, informational materials, and the City Connections and Neighborhood News e-newsletters, tweet-type messages that can be disseminated through different commercial Twitter accounts, and through the use of social media, in particular targeting those that are involved in animal welfare. These will target people that are seeking or owning, or who already own animals. A special page is set to debut on the city's code enforcement web pages that will be accessible through the Neighborhood Services web portal should the council adopt an enforcement strategy tonight. Public service announcements will also be featured on GTV6, and all of this will be will be done in consultation with our animal regulation agencies, the Glendale Humane Society, I'm sorry, the Pasadena Humane Society, and with Glendale Humane Society as an agency in town involved in the adoption of animals. One other strategy will be to deal with our owner community through our dog license database. The enforcement strategy was developed to fit in, I'm sorry, the enforcement strategy was developed to fit in with the city's overall outreach strategy and with the council's adopted enforcement philosophy, which is to educate first, encourage and require responsibility second, and to follow with enforcement if these first two strategies do not work. To that end, staff has developed an enforcement protocol and procedure. The initial compliance inspection will be scheduled in September of this year, a month after the year anniversary for the adoption of this ordinance. At that time, the Neighborhood Services inspector will visit each store, hand out a second copy of the letter that you have in your packet tonight, and verify if there are indeed animals for sale. If the store is compliant, the inspector will ask if the store owner wants to be recognized as one that protects animal welfare in Glendale. If they do, the inspection sheet will be noted, and the outreach staff will issue a certificate to the store that they can post in their window, proudly displaying their commitment, like you, towards animal welfare. If there are animals on display, the inspector will ask to see a manifest identifying each animal and showing the origination of each animal. If the source is validated as a bona fide adoption or humane agency, then the store will be noted as passing, and the PA procedure where we issue a certificate will be followed. If there are non-validated animals for sale, the inspector will issue a notice to cease animal sales immediately and schedule an unannounced follow-up inspection. If the non-validated animals are still present, the inspector will gather evidence in preparation for referral of the entire matter to the city attorney for prosecution in compliance with your direction when the ordinance was adopted. Failure to comply with the provisions of the ordinance will result in criminal prosecution. Stores will be inspected systematically, that is, we'll put them on a regularly scheduled basis, will probably be annually or biannually there following the original September inspection. Finally, during the process of working on this, staff met with Renee Karapetian, owner of Pet Rush in Kenneth Village. Mr. Karapetian has developed a program to provide animals for adoption and a fee that have been acquired by a bona fide animal rescue group. Staff felt that the program, as he has described it, met the city council's intent of limiting animals at pet stores to only those that are available for adoption. We felt that this would work great, so long as documentation that the source of the animal was from a shelter or a rescue group, and that there were no fees that were involved with the purchase of the animal. Staff is requesting that the city council receive the report tonight and adopt the motion directing that education and enforcement can begin. We're prepared to answer any questions on that part of it. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Ochoa, you said, what the report says, the staff... Mr. Ochoa, you said, well, the report says the staff met with the pet store owners?
Yes.
Twenty-three of them?
I believe we identified 18, and we went into each one of those stores, yes.
So 23 is wrong. The list that we are provided is wrong, right?
Let me back up. Some of those are feed stores in the Rancho district, but yes, these are all people that are involved in animals some way or another.
I've been told four of these are out of business. They don't do any.
Yes.
But you list them, even though they're not doing it anymore.
Right.
They were in business at the time of the initial contact.
Initial, yeah, but why are you giving us an old list? Four are out, and there's one out there that we've been told, Pets4Us is selling animals right now.
And that would be, Mr. Weaver, in compliance with your directive, that we have a grace period of one year. That one-year period would end on August 23rd.
So they're able to sell puppy mill animals for a year?
That was your direction a year ago.
Sorry, I didn't realize I voted to allow another year of puppy mill selling. You also say you have reduced staff, and you're not going to be able to do as much inspecting. Is that true?
That's true.
Okay. Renee, I've known him for a long time, Mr. Najarian has known him for a long time, he came up with a proposal, which he came to you with, and never heard a word about it other than staff wanted to do it and not allow somebody like his nonprofit to do the work for us. Presented it to the city manager's office, and I've got nothing back. Now, that's a little aside from this. His effort is in addition to all the unlicensed animals that are out there, and he's offered for no cost to go and serve the city in this capacity, licensing the dogs and giving the revenue to the city of Glendale, at no cost to us. He has the resources to do it. Wouldn't it make sense to allow somebody like his nonprofit organization to do it? Then we wouldn't have to put any resources to bear.
Mr. Weaver, I think I can address that for you, because you did present that to my office. Last week, I made the corrections to that report. You will have that report back, because there were some, some of the numbers that we had questions about with respect to the animal population and the number of households that actually have pets in their home. And now that we have verified some information and also cross-checked it with other neighboring cities, we feel confident in providing that response back to council, but that will come back to you, I presume, by the end of this week.
Since Renee is here, would it be okay for him to come up?
He's got a card.
Oh, he's got a card, okay. No, that was it. You know, I'm passionate about animals, so anything that we can do, the public wants to help anyway, it sure less gives you more freedom with the staff you will have in the future.
I will answer one part of Mr. Weaver's question. Our recommendation to you is that you not transfer the regulatory role of the city to a nonprofit organization. That's a whole nother report that perhaps Mr. Ochoa's report is covering.
Just what addressed, and your letter doesn't cover everything that you say it does. I gather you're aware of that. There's things in there that you say you'll be doing, resources available and so on. It's not in the letter.
Uh huh.
Presume this is a draft and will be revised.
It's the letter we intend to send out. If there's issues, or there's things that you would like us to add, we certainly can do that.
It says no mention of resources are listed for the store owner. Since you say the resources will be provided...
Mr. Weaver, members of the city council, given the reduction in staff, we had one store that is selling dogs and cats. We had two that have them available through the means that you're encouraging, which is adoption from animal agencies. We felt that this level of enforcement was appropriate to having one out of 18 or 23 stores appropriate to go through the entire, an entire enforcement strategy. If we had multiple stores, I think probably, given staff resources, it's difficult right now.
Why, you're down to only one now that you don't have on the list. begs the question, why do you even have to send other? I think you've done a good job of getting the word out to everybody.
We've been doing, without, Councilman Weaver, members of the city council, recognizing that you wanted feedback on this, but also that you wanted this to proceed, we have obviously been talking to these store owners, talking with Mr. Karapetian. He has an interesting idea that I think could work. You've interested, you've expressed interest in talking with him.
Yeah, separate.
Separate of this, and there's some real opportunities, I think, to get the animals that come from those sources that need adoption, and he's got a great model for doing that. I think he's a salesperson for that model to the other stores in a way that staff never could be and shouldn't be. And that's where I would, and I haven't seen Mr. Ochoa's report, I would step back from that part and move that part over to Mr. Karapetian.
Don't think it's coming, that's fine.
Okay.
I just haven't heard anything from staff.
Sorry about that. Mr. Tocotlaln finished it this week, so we'll have it too.
Okay, I have one speaker, Renee Karapetian.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm the mayor, city council. My name is Renee Karapetian, Director of Animal Welfare and Rescue. And I've given package, the proposals to every one of the city council, and I'm here to answer any questions. But the reason why I feel so passionate about this is because I started, two years ago, switching my business to the humane model, and it was very difficult at first, because I was relying, 50% of my net income came from sales of dogs and cats. So I had to learn to completely change my business model to not rely on that one product, which I hate to call it a product, that one product, which was selling dogs and cats, and rely on other services and other products. To not only stay in business, but in two years later, I've been very successful in becoming very good at what I do. So at this point, I'd like to be able to share my information, what I've went through with other stores in the city of Glendale. What I, I am a businessman, so I have a business model, and for everything that I do, including the nonprofit, I have to set a goal. My goal, which I've told several of you already in the past, is to eventually for Glendale to have its own animal control, animal shelter. But in order to get to that point, we have to educate the public. We have to, first step was, a year ago, which I started, and those of you know me and know what I've done, to stop the sales of dogs and cats in the city of Glendale. That was the first step. The second step was to push the stores and educate them, make sure that they stay in business, and they adopt this humane model. Next is why I'm here today, because without the education of the public, we cannot proceed to the next level. We cannot have a city that's, the whole city isn't humane. I have a hotline for the nonprofit, and there's not a day I don't get at least 15 to 20 calls of Glendale residents asking me, "What do we do about this? What do I do about that?" And mostly it's about dogs and cats they don't want to keep anymore. And main reasons are, when I get into it, because I ask them. These are the same people who have called other sources before, Pasadena Humane, Glendale Humane, and they were told, "Bring your dog down, or cat, we'll find them a home. But if we can, it's got to be euthanized." That's Pasadena, not Glendale is a no-kill shelter. But what I do is I spend the time with these people. I make sure I know every detail, and I answer their questions. I know a lot of these dogs and cats have hope, they actually couldn't be replaced, or they could be trained to stay in that same home. That's part of what we do, the education. And we have to start from children and into schools, and that's a program we also, I'm sorry, created.
You better come back when we have that report from...
Go ahead, you can wrap it up. Finish your thoughts.
Thank you, thank you. So I created this program, and my goal is to eventually have a city that's, the only time we have a dog or a cat from this city that gets euthanized is because it's too old or too sick. Other than that, there's no reason for any animal to be euthanized. But till we educate our public, and unfortunately, our staff, even though I have to really appreciate what the Neighborhood Service has done, they work really hard on this report, but unfortunately, you don't have the staffing or the knowledge on how to educating the public or the pet store to switch this humane model and stay in business. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Renee. Thanks for your good work, my friend. Okay, what?
I'll move 8C1.
Do I have a second?
Yes, it's all there.
I'll second it. I just want to thank Mr. Karapetian for coming in and for all of the great work he's doing, and I look forward to hearing that report and to seeing the packet that you left today. Thank you so much.
It's probably improper giving a plug. Mr. Najarian and I both take our dogs there, and he does a great job.
He does.
Up in Kenneth Village.
And I bought my cat brush there. It still does, it still does a very good job.
Now, for the record, you want to emphasize that you're paying the regular fees associated with taking...
Yeah, for the record.
Maybe he can tell me how to make the cat stop thinking that it's just a cat toy, that we're there for a purpose.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next.
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited. Item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, I have Officer Josh Luna first to speak, followed by Chinook Ramirez.
Good evening, mayor, members of council, city staff. I'm Officer Josh Luna. I'm here tonight inviting people to join us in our observance of National Night Out. The purpose of NNO is to get neighbors out of their homes, meet one another, share concerns and goals of the neighborhood, and interact with their local government. These events can be extravagant or as simple as you, as simple as you want, from a barbecue to a block party. The point is to improve or maintain a standard of quality in the neighborhood in partnership with the police department. Last year, we had 44 events citywide. If you're interested, you can learn more about National Night Out at nno.org, glendalenno.com. I'm sorry, is there? Glendalenno.com, they have pictures of prior year events. You can also find an event in your neighborhood or register your event there on that website. You can also call us at 818-548-4015, or you can speak with your community lead officer for your designated area of the city. National Night Out events are visited by GPD, GFD, representatives from other city departments and city council. This is a great way to interact with GPD as we continue to form a stronger partnership with the people we serve. Look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a protocol?
Oh.
Mayor, step in.
Oh, dear.
Next speaker is...
Thank you very much.
Ramirez.
Thank you.
Your name for the record, please.
Chinook Ramirez.
Followed by Herbert Milano.
This is a matter of principle. This, too, is Ramirez's bullet point news. First, I'd like to thank the Glendale Police Officer Matt Zakarian, for he exhibited tactfulness, friendliness, courtesy, and professionalism. Really wonderful person. I want to also congratulate my American heroes. Bravo, bravo, bravo to the honorable Pete Wilson, an ex-marine veteran, hoo ya, hoo ya, and bravo to the honorable Governor Jan Brewer of Arizona, your hard and effective commitment to the true inherent liberties, freedom, justice, love, dignity, honor, right to own and protect your property and person, and be rightfully handed over it to its rightful heirs, the American citizens. Now it's time for you both to run for president and get Romney out, because he's out there pandering. I'm not crazy about him anymore. I want to reaffirm to our legal brilliant Italian scholar and senior Supreme Court Justice, boy, was he a hard ass. Yes, we are under siege. Help us enforce the immigration laws, and I want to thank you so much, brilliant scholar and justice Antonin Scalia. Thank you so much for such anger and such passion and such frustration, for you realize that all Americans, true Americans, including military veterans and pilots, are under siege from these illegal criminal aliens and gangbangers. Help us enforce the laws, please. So the motto should be, "Deport, deport, deport, no asylum and no amnesty," President Obama. And remember, too, these wicked, treacherous, and evil Latino bully deviants play stupid. Follow the immigration rule of law with no exception. These Latino gangbangers and criminal legal aliens have slithered into our transportation system and conduct a criminal empire on buses, MetroLink, Amtrak, shuttle buses. They use fear and intimidation with brute force. They loiter in all connecting hubs, i.e., Union Station and all the other bus stops and train stops. These buses are primarily the most dangerous, most filthy, causing MRSA, staph infections, scabies, and pediggo tuberculosis, hepatitis, along with an array of other staph infections and heavier strains. They don't cover their mouths, and these people don't cover their mouths when they cough, and they pick their noses and wipe their snots on the bus upholstery or the train upholstery. These dangerous buses are as follow. Two, four, 20, 105, 180, 181, 207, 210, 710, 720, 740, 757, 780. The gold line, the red and purple line are the most dangerous as well. Just so you know, you should take a bus ride with me, Mr. Nazarian, and you would know just how dangerous these buses are. You know, I talk from experience, for it is a best teacher. And having said that, I also want to go ahead and do an ad lib presentation of just how wicked these gangbangers are, and I speak from experience, and my attorneys know this as well. Many alarm systems, if not, in fact, most of them did not know this. I had to analyze every freaking detail of my home, why and how it was being vandalized and ransacked. I realized that these gangbangers are coming in through the net boards around the house or the apartment, and what they do, they open up these net boards with a net, and they slither underneath the house, and then they build a hole, or they drill a hole under your closet or your home in every area underneath where they find it a lot more feasible, and they drill, they hammer, and they pop it open and into your premises. And now that I've got ADT, a bunch of dingbats, and a waste of money, they put sensors where they, these people coming from underground, these gangbangers, because I speak out against the gangbangers, and now I'm on the hit list, so they have come from underneath my closet ground, the floorboards, and they pop it open, and they pop it up. So many people don't know that, and the alarm companies did not know that. I had to teach them. These gangbangers are opening, go through the opening around the house or apartments, and again, they go in at night, and then they start finding a place where they can just pop up and ransack and violate your home. They also carry their own locksmiths. They open up your locks. So if you, better to use a combination, because a key and lock, they will pop it open. They carry their own locksmiths. Many of these Latino locksmiths are engaged in criminal mayhem and do open your doors. If you don't know that, good luck, but that's what I want to inform the people, please.
A Herbert Milano, followed by Mohammed Sadeghi.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council and staff. My name is Herbert Milano. I am coming to you to, as the new year begins, the new fiscal year, and as this city begins the process of developing its financial reports, that perhaps the city can prepare a set of popular financial statements that will allow the general public to get a better understanding of what is taking place. Now, in a previous city budget, we were able to see an attempt to popular financial statements. Unfortunately, it really lacked the type of clarity with regard to the trends that the city has experienced in the past few years. When I was speaking this past week before the Glendale Republican Club, people were not aware, for example, that CalPERS only had a 1.5% return of its investment, and that the city of Glendale, meaning the stakeholders, were responsible for the remaining shortfall from that 1.5% to the 7.34%. They didn't know. They didn't know, and most of them were quite surprised to find that the overall obligation of CalPERS stands at about $1.3 billion, or that the unfunded portion of that is about $300 million. The post-employment benefits stand at about $200 million unfunded. And what that means, obviously, is that the impact that Glendale then needs to make up on a yearly basis is fairly significant, that it has grown from about $8 million 10 years ago to now, well, last year was $24 million, maybe a little bit higher now. That it does have a significant impact overall on the city's budget. And then, that that means is that certain parts of the infrastructure will not get attended to, that fees are going to be raised, that families are going to be impacted, that transfers from the utility need to be moved over. More than anything else, I think that guarantee that we have on CalPERS obligation in order to meet that defined benefit, it's probably one of the largest negative impacts on the budget. And tackling that problem, I think, is a significantly objective that you must tackle this year, and it's going to be difficult. But I think it is doable. Most people who become aware of an ex-employee who's now making in retirement more than he made when he was working for the city of Glendale easily say, you know, this is unjustified. The ex-police chief of the city of Glendale, Cyver Ling, makes more in retirement than he did on his last year as an employee. And these employees oftentimes are not retiring. They're just simply moving over to another city where they don't have CalPERS, and they can make an equivalent amount of money. So it's not retirement by any means. The impact is not only negative with regard to what it has for the programs that the city needs to support, but when these employees move on to another position while getting retirement, they're basically taking somebody else's job. I don't believe that the city of Glendale should be hiring anyone who's retired. It's unjustified. It prevents other individuals within the departments to move up the ladder and take on those positions of importance. But when residents and ratepayers wind up asking for some type of assistance when they cannot pay their utility, we have a significant problem. So it is my suggestion that as part of this clarity and this process of showing the public our real status of the finances of Glendale, that you consider what will take place to all of these families who had these notices of impending electricity shut-off, because they cannot afford it. And those families need your attention as well. You have the pressure next to you, because when you come to these offices, you're bound to run into individuals with whom you've developed close relationships. But I believe that those individuals who are not heard in front of you every Tuesday need to have some consideration with regard to the rate of electricity they pay and to the impact that the shortfall will have on them as we raise electricity rates.
Mohamed Sadehi, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mohamed Sadehi. I'm owner of a property at 211 South Verdugo Road in Glendale, and I've been there for, since 1989, for almost 25, 30 years. I have an issue, I have four issues now, it may be developing to five, but my adjacent property neighbor is not taking control of his property. He owns about half the block, literally half the block, in, at 211 South Verdugo Road. And as such, we have people from the high school and other youngsters that come and use his parking lot as a place to trade drugs, to buy and sell, to have sex, to drink as minors, and they jump the wall that we have, mutual wall, and they come to my property. And literally, every day I get vandalized. Not every day, every other day. So about two weeks ago, on May 21st, apparently, one of the people that I had called the police on came back and broke the copper pipe of the property, which caused a tremendous amount of water to gush out for almost a whole entire day. My neighbors had called the city from the very beginning of the day until night, and nobody ever responded from the water department to shut down the water. According to the, I wasn't there. I learned about it that Sunday. According to the neighbors, the dog was barking, the TV was on, there were traffic, and they could hear that water run and run and run. As a result, there's a big, huge pothole of the amount of water that gushed out into the backyard that I have. I came to the city, and I asked the city to, you know, to look into this and waive the charges. I was concerned who was going to pay, how much, what was the amount of the bill going to be. They were very impressively able to, at their desk, using their computer, identify that the intruder came in at exactly, I believe it was 4:40 or somewhere about 5:00 a.m., and that the water was finally shut down at almost 7:00 p.m. They were able to end it down, and they said that I use about, there was about 2,500.3 gallons of water that had run out during that short period, and they gave me estimates somewhere between $300 to $500 worth of water usage. And I basically was sharing my thoughts with them. I asked them to waive it. They said, I have to wait for the bill. And I said, you know, I don't think I should pay it, and I... So that's one issue. The other issue is when I called the police department, nobody responded. I waived the police officer in the street that was passing by. He referred me to another police department member that was dealing with that sort of issues. I've spoken to the sergeant in charge of watch commander, I believe he's called. So no report was taken. On the day that I came to see the city employees for the utilities, I went to the police department afterwards about, between 6:00, 6:30, somewhere in that timeframe, if I'm not mistaken. For about a half an hour, I was asking for a report. They said they can't take a report, because I don't have a repair bill, nor do I have a water bill. So that went on, and my property became more vandalized. We got graffiti, and then they came back with more graffiti. And yesterday, I came in and I spoke to Ms. Chrissy Bobine, and she said she was going to discuss it with the water department. And I'm basically asking the city to look into this and help me out in a way that, you know, we try to do everything we can, and, you know, I've called the police a number of times, and they're either out of budget, or they can't respond, because the act is not happening in front of them. And basically, I'd like to get your support on that. And one last thing I'd like to mention, as I was walking out, it looks like the employees that I had spoken to at the water department are now complaining against me, and one of the police officers approached me, and this I had not heard about, nor has anybody talked about, all the time that I have gone to the police department and spoken to many, at least, many members of the police, and nobody has ever complained about me about it, until just today. And it seems like it may be a potential employee, I don't know, retaliation, because, you know, I was angry, and I didn't want to pay the water bill, you know.
Okay, have a seat. We've responded at the end of oral communication.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mike Mohill, followed by Harry Zavos.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, councilmembers in the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. Mrs. Freeman, you amaze me that we shouldn't compare Social Security with a pension. Tell that to the thousands of people in Glendale who are living on Social Security, and talk about the unsustainable pensions and unsustainable obligations we have for the city of Glendale. Number two, you say that the GTE took a 1.8% pay reduction in 2010. My question to you, ma'am, why didn't the fire police and the management association take the cut also? Is that because they don't have any clout in this city? Now to what I wanted to speak about. Last week, when I presented a PowerPoint showing in 2009, Councilman Aaron Najarian and Frank Quintero, both were receiving about $15,000 directly or indirectly from the city unions. Mr. Najarian defended that, can't, excuse me, that Mr. Najarian's defense was campaign laws had changed since 2009, and that $1,000 certainly helped his candidacy, I believe so. Let me rephrase. I'm getting myself confused, I'm sorry. I'm going to start again. Last week, when I presented a PowerPoint showing in 2009, Councilman Aaron Najarian and Frank Quintero both were receiving about $15,000 directly or indirectly from the city unions. Mr. Najarian's defense was that campaign laws had changed since 2009, and that $1,000 is the limit one can now give to a candidate. Not that the $15,000 certainly helped his candidacy in 2009. Mr. Najarian also said Mr. Mohill will tell the public that unions can pump thousands of dollars into campaigns, and that is false, and Mr. Mohill knows it. That is not false, Mr. Najarian. The truth is, campaign laws have changed. Today, we have a limit of $1,000 for individuals, but the uncontrolled committee, political action committees, PACs, for unions have unlimited amounts of money that our city unions can give their favorite candidates. For example, last year, according to California Form 496, independent expenditure report, the Glendale Police Officers Association, PAC, hired Freeman Public Affairs to conduct polling and survey research for $3,300 and a political brochure in support of candidate Dave Weaver. $8,612 the brochure. Mr. Weaver will tell the public he knew nothing about what the police association did for him, but he did benefit from their resources. Councilmembers in the viewing audience, why would the police association contribute a total of $8,612 to the Weaver campaign? In addition, why did Glendale Firefighters Association walk door-to-door in behalf of former Councilman John Draymond last year? And why in 2009, according to Councilwoman Laura Freeman, California Form 60, 46, that is, did the police association and fire associations contribute $1,000 each to her campaign? The issue before us is the appearance of wrongdoing when city unions contribute directly or indirectly to candidates, and later, councilmembers do not ask for performance reviews of employees when negotiating with new contracts. Councilman Najarian, I am bringing these facts to the public, not to tear down the city, or tear down the city council, or tear down the establishment, as you stated last week, but to hopefully educate the public and step the record straight. Someone on council will probably knock me for my efforts. Councilman Najarian, you remember that mailer that was sent out by the Glendale Police and Fire Union in your support? Councilman Quintero, you look younger there, sir. The Police and Fire Department also did a mailer for you in your behalf. Mr. Weaver, this is the 460 form for your mailer, a handout by the Freeman Associates. Hope the viewing audience can see it. $8,600 the mailer, the brochure. And these are the pensions we are paying our city employees. Thank you to the councilpeople who sit on council right now. We have hundreds of people receiving pensions, and the public lives on Social Security, Mrs. Freeman, because you don't want to compare Social Security with the pension. Well, ma'am, you tell it to the thousands of people who have to decide food or water or water their lawn, or whatever you want to call it. Thank you.
Harry Zavos, followed by Leon Meyer.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a citizen of Glendale. I must tell you that with age, I've had a diminished appetite to come before you and address you, and at times, I have to force myself to do so, and I do so out of a sense that it's a city duty. Lately, I've focused my remarks on practices of the city, which I believe violate either the state constitution or the city charter. That was so with the now suspended water fee transfer to support general services. More recently, I made the case that specific language of the charter conflicts with the city practice of having a line item budget appropriation of some $20 million of electrical fees to be transferred to support general services. The public can see the basis for that case by going to www.OGGC.org/zavos, with a capital Z, dot PDF. There they will find a flow chart of charter-created funds and how they function, followed by a chart with the text of the charter sections on which it's based. I particularly draw their attention, or the public's attention, to Section 20, the last paragraph. About a month ago, we were told that the city attorney was preparing a legal memorandum on this issue. As of yet, that memorandum is not forthcoming to the general public. Now, I understand without the $21 million transfer, there'll be a budget shortfall, but there's nothing to prevent the city from legally making up that shortfall. There's nothing to prevent the city from raising and increasing general revenues for the general budget fund, so long as they put the measure to raise those revenues on the ballot and get a majority vote of the people. The sidestep, such a vote reflects, I believe, a paternalistic distrust of the public that is profoundly inconsistent with democratic principles. While on the subject of votes of the people, I also made out a case that under the state constitution, any change in electrical fees requires a vote of the people. Time does not allow me to now set out in full that case. Let me just briefly say that it was based on Article 13(c) of the state constitution, and how the language of 13(c) applies to the fact that, of the $21 million transfer of electrical fees, and on the fact that unlike ratepayers, who have to pay to illuminate their homes and their businesses, streetlights illuminate for the general public free of charge. Now, we've been told, again, that the city attorney is preparing a legal memorandum on this issue. Next week, the city begins its public outreach on electrical fee increases and changes. And that opinion, even though those outreaches begin this next week, is yet not forthcoming for the general public. In the name of transparency, in the name of an informed public, I urge this council to immediately make available to the general public those legal opinions.
Leon Meyer.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of Glendale Public Library to tell you about our event upcoming on July 12, Thursday evening, 7 o'clock Central Auditorium, entitled "This Angelic Land" by Eris Janigian. Now, this book is the first book written about the Rodney King riots of 1992. We've recently had a kind of a anniversary, not a celebration, but anniversary, kind of observation after 20 years. And incidentally, we all know Rodney King passed away within the last two, three weeks. So this event is particularly interesting. And what's more interesting is that no author yet has written about the background and insightful things about this riot, which was the most deadliest riot in United States history and was known throughout the world at the time it happened. So we're lucky to be able to bring to you on July 12, Eris Janigian, who is a well-known author. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about him. Before I talk a little bit, I'm only going to talk a little bit about the book itself. Eris Janigian has written, he's from Reno, I mean Fresno originally. He's written novels about his youth and upbringing in Fresno. And he's written other books for the West, LA Times, West Magazine, and LA Times columnist. He's a well-known, respected author and he was a finalist for the Saroyan Fiction Competition a couple of years back. And I think everybody's probably heard about who William Saroyan was, but I'm going to repeat. William Saroyan was a famous Armenian playwright who was not only known throughout the country but worldwide as a great author. So he almost won that fiction prize. He was a finalist for it. And like I say, I'm enthused about the fact we're able to bring him to the library. And let's talk a little bit about the book. The book features an Armenian who has come here from the, survived the civil war in Lebanon. And since he was Armenian, we know where he was before surviving the civil war in Lebanon. And so he comes here and you hear about the six days that he spends with Muslim youth, with an Armenian gang member, with a Kurd, and I don't know who else. It's very interesting and he's challenged because this reminds him of how he and his family survived the Lebanon War. And so he comes here and he remembers passing through the Statue of Liberty. And so now LA is destroyed, so to speak, and he has to deal with it. And how's he going to respond to it? And what is the depth of feeling of the country toward this stirring event, this terrible event that occurred back in 1992? So he's a novelist, he's a great storyteller, but he has incisive thoughts about how our country is developing and what is there and what is coming tomorrow. So please, consider coming to the library on January 12 to hear Eris Janigian sign, sell, and talk about his book, "This Heavenly Land." Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's July 12. Mr. Choa, did you have?
July 12. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a comment?
Well, just on, I guess, on the two things. Ms. Baboumian in our office is indeed following up for the gentleman that spoke and we would just ask for his patience and indulgence while we get that information back to him. But separate and apart from that, to the point raised by Mr. Zavos, because he's made it repeatedly. It's obvious Mr. Zavos is a very learned man. He makes some very compelling arguments. But that doesn't mean that we can't disagree and in fact, we do disagree. And that's okay because the complexity that we are faced with in California, thanks to our ballot initiative system, is a bunch of ballot measures that are rife with unintended consequences. And Prop 26, which is the basis of the foundation of his argument, is no exception. Prop 26 was adopted by the voters in November of 2010, really as a way to preclude what were defined as regulatory fees. And as such, it lent itself for application for any number of other areas of law, and electric rates in particular, most specifically. What 26 says, however, is that it is not retroactive. Moreover, 26 does not, it does take into account what past practice has been. So the electric transfer, as it has existed, as it exists today, is legal, certainly in our opinion, and that is our fervent argument. Moreover, when you look at as it's applied, when you look at how the law reads, and when you look at relevant cases, most notably, the one that bears out is the City of Reading case that was recently upheld. It indicates that if you meet these types of tests where it is not, we aren't looking backwards, we're looking forward, the matter of past practice and how it's applied going forward, that you can indeed increase electric rates and not jeopardize that transfer that has been in place. I think it's important that the community knows that because we've heard it repeatedly and not casting aspersions at the legal argument necessarily, but rather just a reflection of the fact that we can disagree based on the way that the law is written, based on the way that the law is applied. And it should be no surprise to anybody that at this time, in this day and age in California, after we've done a myriad of ballot measures, that there is ample room for different interpretations. But we, certainly, I don't want to speak for the city attorney, but we have to advise council based on what we know, not just what we think, but what courts have said and how they have ruled. And that is precisely what animates the discussions that we have had as part of the budget and what our recommendations are. When you look at the electric transfer to the general fund, when you note that it is expressly authorized by our charter and that the intention from the framers of our charter was that we would indeed transfer money to the general benefit, the overall community, I fail to see how there is some nefarious reasoning behind that. When you consider that the city maintains the funds in the GWP utility and the way that it was really intended or it meets the, satisfies the intent of what the charter holds out, I think the council can take heart, take solace in the fact of what you have done, solace is the wrong word, but take heart, take confidence in that what you have done is the right thing. Now, all that said, GWP is in a period of transition and we have challenges and we have and are putting the right management in place to make sure that we meet our infrastructure needs and do so in a way that is most cost efficient. But real change takes time and the world continues to turn. We have to operate the utility. And that means that we have to make strategic investments in that infrastructure. And so, yes, we are commencing with a proposal, an outreach, and really, an unprecedented level of outreach to our customers and community partners. And I need to be very clear because the council was equally clear with staff during the budget process about customer service and about outreach, about communication, meaningful communication and transparency. And that is that if we cannot demonstrate through the course of this summer's outreach that we are indeed the trusted community utility that we have always prided ourselves on being, if we cannot demonstrate true value to our customers by way of cutting-edge technology, sustainable energy, and exceptional service, well then, we have additional work to do. This outreach this summer is as much about demonstrating what that value is to our customers as anything else. And if the feedback from our customers through this summer is that we still have work to do and that impacts the potential timing of any proposed electric rate increase, well then so be it. Then shame on us as staff if we bring you that type of proposal, that type of potential rate increase proposal, if we have not done that level of work. So our commitment, both from Mr. Zern and myself, is to engage the public like they have not been before, to make sure that not only do they understand, but they truly believe and we can have confidence in bringing to you a rate increase and the fact that they believe, the customers believe, that they are getting value. At the end of the day, that's what this whole thing is about.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Choa, Mr. Mayukin.
Yes, I do have my reservations about the electric transfer. However, last week I did vote for it. And I still have reservations, but I will withhold my comments regarding that issue until the opinion from the city attorney, which is still forthcoming. We have not received it yet.
As you may recall, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have prepared an issue, an opinion on the Prop 26 issue, but the secondary issue that Mr. Zavos has raised, we have not completed that opinion yet.
Okay, so I don't have that information yet for me to be able to further do research on this item. And there are certainly two sides of this issue and I know there are disagreements, but I will continue to keep an open mind on this. A couple of issues on another item, actually. The item that we approved on the consent calendar, the CAD for the police department. Was that item, and I know, sorry for the late questions, but was that item that was not a budgeted item, right? It's a new item that is being added to the budget?
It's both, sir. If you look at, I know you've perused it and I appreciate the question. When you look at the staff report, it itemizes that there are funds from the last fiscal year, the bulk of the funds from salary savings, so it wouldn't show up on the line item in the current budget.
Right, but this item was not budgeted as such. I know they are in need of it and it does need to be upgraded, but they had not budgeted for it. Therefore, we are appropriating additional funds that are being taken from other areas of savings and allocating to this fund, basically.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so we can appropriate additional funds that are not budgeted?
Most certainly, sir.
Okay. And this is a one-time expenditure, the 1.5 million?
It's an investment in capital, so at some point it will depreciate.
So it's not every year we're going to be investing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. I can't let Mr. Mike Mohill get away with his accusations. First of all, some clarification. He seems to imply that this city, on its own, can affect the PERS contributions and the PERS retirement rates at this point in time, looking backwards. You might be thinking of the cities of San Jose and San Diego. Those cities have completely different retirement plans. So this city has absolutely no power to adjust those rates. However, Governor Brown is setting forth a proposition which would affect those rates as well as several other issues involved in the public pensions. I suggest he take all that energy that he has, that he brings out every week and then some, to join the campaign, supporting Governor Brown for that. And there may be other opportunities for him throughout the state to advocate that that be done. The issue of the donations, he doesn't love the city. He says he does. He doesn't. He said the law was changed. The law was changed. Well, what he didn't say is, we changed the law. We, council, changed the law on the contributions, not some law in Sacramento or at the Board of Supervisors level or imposed on us by the FPPC. We, the members sitting here, changed that law. So again, that's lost in his rhetoric. He, it would, I think it would kill him to admit that this council took steps towards campaign reform, not just in the amounts of the dollars that are given, but in a wide range of practices that we previously permitted that we now do not. That skips by him. He likes to skim over that because it really is the monkey wrench in his argument. And his argument is that those contributions are not just, they're not right. Well, the Supreme Court ruled that such contributions by way of the PACs are legal. Until the Supreme Court rules again, that is a right of individuals acting through their union and through their PAC to do so. It is part of the First Amendment. Now, is Mr. Mohill against the First Amendment? I think he is. And it's ironic that the First Amendment that permits him to come up and lay these outlandish accusations, week after week, personally attacking all of us here, also is the amendment that he hates that permits the PACs to make donations. And that is the law of the land. So he's against free speech. He's against the Constitution. He's against the Bill of Rights. And what a tragedy on the eve of the Fourth of July, that the most sacred holiday for freedom in this country, Mr. Mohill stands before us with a straight face, a straight face, ladies and gentlemen, and denigrates the Constitution that makes this United States such a great country. And that's what it is. I mean, let's follow it through. And I'm not trying to be dramatic, but it's the free speech aspect that he hates. And if you hate free speech, he's in the wrong country. Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Any other comments? Mr. Zern, I assume you're going to be working on that water issue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I had a preliminary report from my staff this morning and followed through on that. Little bit different story than the one I heard, but we will get a report to council and touch base with the resident as well.
Okay, good. And that's true of the police department in terms of?
They too, Mr. Mayor, have been informed.
They're nodding their head, yes.
I believe they're investigating, yes.
I do have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.